To call this meeting of the Technology Committee to order on Wednesday, August 11. Can you put up the agenda, Robin? I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah.
Thanks. First order of business is if everyone would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agendas, the next order of business, now a motion.
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Three zero. Any public comments? We go to the July 21st Committee Meeting Minutes.
I move we accept the July 21st, 2021 Committee Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three zero, Robin. And now we get to the meat of our meeting. It's like, almost like alliteration there, meet, the meeting. Finding the scope of the committee, we want to come out today with a defined scope. And I think from the last, our last meeting, we agreed that we were going to focus on OE 17. So we're going to monitor performance of OE 17. The only other thing I could think of was we also, I think, want us propose any changes to OE 17 that we feel are appropriate as we go through our review. So I'll throw that out for you all. And then we also have an email that I sent to you all from Tanya. So. Those are five bullet points we can start off with. Ingrid, what do you think?
Yeah, um, so I, I guess my question is, so this, I agree with, well, are you guys hearing the feedback on your end or is that just me? Okay, um, I think what Tanya sent is good, I mean, it definitely emphasizes the strategic aspect and then it looks like the next bullet point down OE 17, that that would fall underneath the scope of the strategic oversight. Is that how you understand it as well?
Hmm.
Yeah, so I think that's a great, great way to go. I like the three bullet points that Tanya has on there and I think that they're broad and encompass, I think pretty much everything we've talked about falls under one of those bullet points.
Nick?
I concur.
Okay, so I think we have a scope. It might be a record time.
I'm hoping we adjourn.
We have a scope and there's enough latitude, I think, in these bullet points that we can go where we need to go.
I agree. I will also say though, Mr. Stravenger, I'm sorry if you want me to raise the electronic hand, I do think we need to go over OE 17 with more of a technology lens a little bit. We've talked about it some, I don't know if we need to go, you know, how you want to proceed on that.
Go through that again. Yeah, I'm just trying to think whether Tanya's bullet points allow us to make recommendations to change OE 17. I just have a feeling that we're going to find something we want to add to that.
Yeah.
So maybe we can add that bullet point if that's okay with you to propose any changes to OE 17. Which wouldn't kick until next year, but. I just think we can, we might be able to improve 17. Four bullet points. So. Let's go back through 17.
Or do you want to start at the beginning?
Yeah, I guess the beginning is a good place to start.
The interpretations and the monit- Um. Suggest maybe having a copy of the interpretations and monitoring indicators to, is that, are you suggesting to modify the interpretations or the actual policies themselves?
Actual policy, I, I wouldn't modify the interpretation. I just think we may find something that we, we could add as we go through, we may not. But if we, if we go off and find some area that we think is important, that we want to emphasize, the place to do it would be to come back to 17 and put it down as one of the numbers. I just, I just think that's a good, we should have that latitude or explain that because I just have a feeling that months from now, we'll be, we'll be looking at something and we'll say, boy, that's really important. And we're going to want to say, hey, we should really emphasize that in, in OE 17. We shouldn't assume that the next group is going to know that that's underneath of this number, you know? You know, to clarify it a little for the next group that comes along. So that's all I was thinking, Tanya. Yeah, but we do need to see, I thought last time we, we had the interpretations also, or the, yeah, the interpretations also.
You did, you had the interpretation recommendations, so I need to go put those out.
Apparently, there's a threat somewhere.
I had to get for my dog with Zoom, I had to get a little bark box and you turn it on and it just, it makes one of those little like, sounds that no one else can hear but a dog. And so if, if she was, if I was on a Zoom and she was going crazy, I'd just turn it on and it, man, it worked.
Wow.
Just had to return it off.
I'll have to look into that, I mean, they don't listen to anything I say.
No, my problem, a big truck comes anywhere near our house, she goes bananas.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, any truck. You don't have to see it, you just hear it.
No, it's the nemesis, it's, it's a giant threat. I'm like, what are you going to do? It's a garbage truck, you're like a football. What's your plan?
Can you all see the monitoring indicators?
Yes. Good.
Oh, on Zoom.
Right. Let's go back through this again, the superintendent partner with faculty, you're making this hard on me.
When do you want me, you want to start with the policy itself or the indicators?
Where is, I'm, I'm not seeing it, is it, it's not on the Zoom screen, I've got, are you screen sharing those? Am I missing?
There you go.
I got it, there you go, okay.
Let's be, okay, superintendent partner with faculty, staff, students and staff, both within as well as outside the district, to make technology integrate seamlessly with research and support operations of the district. That covers a lot.
Yeah. So.
Glad, you don't, we don't need to raise hands, I can see everybody.
Well, I'm just kind of trying to find an entry point for discussion because like this thing, that, that first paragraph to me is very encompassing, the interpretation, you know, is very sort of, this is what we do. What I think one thing, when you go down to like the superintendent shell one, so this is just an example of the kind of technology lens. Where it says ensure consistent best in class support, et cetera, et cetera. What I would like to see in there too, one thing I think that when we ta, I sent an email about, I think we talked about it, is sort of our UX and our UI experiences for technology for stakeholders, like I would want to flush that out either in the interpretation or the policy a little bit more, that we have some sort of user, end user program, I don't know what the word would be, some sort of end user where we're looking at how the technology is being deployed and how parents are using it. Would that need an addition to the policy, a tweak to the policy or a tweak to the interpretation? Or is that something that we don't even need to put in there?
I mean, I would think the end user experience would be encompassed in that statement as a broad whole.
Right, but this is where I was trying to talk about, this is an emphasis, we think it's under there, but.
Right.
Probably, probably be explicit. Because we want more than just the four or five of us to know that, that that's in there.
What, what? Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Frankly, I believe we should just accept this as written right now. And then we have the monitoring indicators, we go to the staff and say, okay, you've said what the moni, monitoring indicators are, you need to set up and give us a briefing on the results based on the monitoring indicators. Once we get that, then we can look at maybe changing or adding or doing whatever, but we're not going to know the specifics until we get reports from the monitoring indicators that they have interpreted and give us those reports. We haven't gotten a report on any of these indicators that I know of right now, other than what was said at the last meeting in general terms, but not a formal report. Till you get a formal report, you don't know what you don't know. And you don't know what you should change. So that, this is, this to me is just like standard operating procedures. You set it up, you set the policy up, you said, this is what we're going to do, then you do it. And after you do it, you review it and you make changes based on that review.
Hey, Rip?
Yeah, but this is a good example because when we went through this first one, number one, because the moni, the sole monitoring indicator about whether or not hardware issues, instructions, software, SAS, everything comes down to web help desk service ticket survey. And to me, that is, in my opinion, that is just not even kind of touching the broadness of what number one OE 17.1 is getting into. And we talked about that because what, when Mr. Shoaham was going through it at our first Technology Committee meeting, he said, oh, no, we have solar wind, we have all these other things we're doing that we didn't even know about. So to me, if I'm looking at, so, so I'm just going to use this as an example, I think this would be a good place where an adequate interpretation and monitoring would have some sort of formalized UX, UI design experience. There is nothing in that monitoring indicator, the web health desk service ticket survey that would get at any of that. So if we just accept it and then they come and say, here's their web help desk service ticket survey, because as a parent in the district, I can tell you, I've never filled out one of these things and I don't think that's even the primary route most stakeholders would use to address technology problems. How do we know what we're missing? You know what I mean? So it would be, I mean, we can accept it and then, but then what? Because that is not adequate to cover all of what one is intending to cover. And we talked about that too, we talked about seeing solar wind reports and that sort of thing, but anyways, I'm sorry, Rich, that's all I have to say on that.
But my, my point is, let's have, we got a, we got a verbal, when we went through these one by one last time we met. Let's get a report in on hard, hard copy. For each of those, they're going to have to do that anyway. And then once we get the report, you can say, well, we have parental survey, okay, show us the survey. Show us the survey results, show us how many people you talked to and what, what were your results? Data, metrics. Once we get that, then we can determine, we need to more, ask more questions, we need to have more information, but until we have it in writing, we are just talking. That, that's my view.
Yeah, I think we'd be successful going either way.
Well, I'll just say right now, I mean, I, I haven't seen, like you said, I've only been on the board six months, but it sounds like we've never really seen the help desk service ticket survey. But I kind of have a sense and Mark, Mr. Shoaham, maybe you can let me know, that seems more like people within the school, do parents have access to that at all? Do students have access to that or is that more something that comes from school technology staff kind of kicking it up?
Um, it's basically for in-house staff.
So to me, it doesn't, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, I'm just saying that answers the question because how are we exceeding stakeholder expectations with a monitoring indicator that only gets at one stakeholder? That's sort of like we roll out a new reading program and we just survey the reading teachers to see if they like it and use that as a monitoring metric. I mean, we're not, we're not even touching a lot of the stakeholders that we, that this, so that's why I'm saying, I don't, you know, if we vote to approve this and we get the web help desk service ticket, I don't think that answers the question, I don't think that is adequate. End com, end comment.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't thinking about approving anything, actually, I was just, maybe we should just take this one and, and look at the report like Dick said and, and then put your piece in, because I agree with you, Ingrid, I think this is, it's missing the end user part, which is where we touch our constituents.
Well, well, maybe since they've heard the discussion, then when we get the report, they'll put some end user data in there.
That would be great.
You know, so I think they're smart folks, they understand what the, what we've been talking about, let's give them a shot to give us a report and we can take a look at it when we get that report.
Well, could we compromise?
Right, right.
I was saying, could we compromise and maybe not approve it yet, but like see the report and see where we're at? Because to me, I have a hard time approving it because I don't think that from what Mr. Shoaham says, that that's an adequate monitoring indicator for that, for that OE 17.1.
I think we're, we're a ways from approving, I think.
I'm going to answer, and.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, um, if I may, we do understand what your concerns are with missing the end user information. What I would suggest is that we be able to bring back a report with the web desk ticket surveys and any other surveys that we may have and not only bringing data to you, but also bring proposed additions to our monitoring indicators. So we could perhaps add another bullet point or two and propose that as an addition, additional monitoring indicator for OE 17.1 and so we can enhance the.
Sounds good to me.
That's, it's the target to me, Ingrid, you know?
Yeah.
It's good, yep, all right, Tanya, that's, that's the way we'll go.
One, just one other comment. This, I know is, is a living document, but it shouldn't be. I mean, it, it should have, we shouldn't review it every month or every quarter, once a year. Let it, get it set. Otherwise, we're going to be driving the staff up the trees, which we don't need to do. We, we get it, get this first one out of our, out of the way, get it so we like it and then, and then put it aside. And work with it for a year. And, you know, probably we want to do it in concert with the superintendent's evaluation. So we, we have some metrics in this particular area so that we can do our job when we monitor and evaluate the superintendent's performance. Just a, just a thought.
So can I ask a question then, Colonel? Sorry.
Right.
No, I, I can't see you, David, I've got to get it where I can see you, go ahead, I, I don't mean to interrupt.
But I agree, I agree, Dick, we get this right and then it, and we let it percolate for a year and then we revisit it, no, no intention of re. Once a year. Ingrid?
Well, I was going to say, I agree, but I think this should be the, the first time of the year and then leave it alone, rather than accepting what we have now. I don't know what went into OE 17, when, because that's being new to the board, when you guys went over all this stuff. I just, looking at it from a, from a technology planning standpoint, it seems to leave out a lot of stuff that I think would be important in a, in a technology policy expectation. So I'm hoping that maybe we can kind of look at it now and tinker with it a little bit and then once we get it set, leave it alone, then I'm happy to do that. But to me, right now, it's a fairly imperfect OE. But I'll go either way.
Well, I can tell you that when we developed the OEs, it wasn't with a lot of focus on each one, it was, okay, that's broad, it'll cover, it'll cover most of the stuff, we didn't, we didn't look at it surgically, which is what we're going to do now. So we're, we're really refining that, because this was just one OE, which is part of a whole policy thing. You know, human nature, you can't focus on everything with the same degree of intensity. So this is really refining the OE and then I think it'll be good for a while. That, that's just my view on it, okay, with that, Dick?
Yeah, I agree, I, I just want the staff to look at the monitoring indicators that they say. Their interpretation and then the monitoring indicators and then give us something to look at. But to mess around with the performance indicators, we've been there, now it's time for the staff to do their thing and let us know by giving us reports based on the monitoring indicators that they picked. Remember, they picked that, we didn't. That was their interpretation and their indicators, let's give them a shot. And give us a report and evaluate and then if you have questions or things that are not answered, that's the time after you have a hard copy, that's the time that we tweak it and we may have to tweak the performance indicators. I don't think so, I think they're broad enough, but the monitoring indicators is where you're getting into the specifics.
I think we're all lined up. I think we all agree. So that'll be our next step.
Seems to me that we have a, we have a superintendent to evaluate in, in a couple months. So I, I would sure like to see the monitoring indicators and the, the results of that so that we have a time, a chance to look at it, report to the full board before we sit down and, and fill out our performance evaluation on the superintendent.
That's going to be a little tricky because I, I don't think the OEs were in place in time to hold, hold them to many, but it's a good idea to give us a feel for what was going on. So that's our next step, yeah, that's our next step then. And Tanya, or, or Mark, how long would it take to, to do that? For you all?
Um, it might take a little bit longer right now, being the start of school for my staff, we're pretty stretched out with getting the devices in the kids' hands and going forward with the day-to-day operations.
I, I was actually thinking it might be beneficial if we, if we discuss one OE at a time, so OE 17.1 on this meeting, start with a report of this, you know, information and basic systems and then any revisions to, you know, if we want, you know, add any monitoring indicators or whatever, but providing information on every one of these OEs. This is, and I don't know if Ms. O'Wright knows this, but this was a newly developed OE, it never existed before and has never been monitored before, so we never had provided a monitoring report in history on, on this topic. So everything will be new. And so, you know, I, I can't see us being able to report on all 11 OEs within a couple month period of time, I, I, I honestly don't think that's going to be possible for us. With the level.
Oh, Robin had her hand up first.
Um, the OEs, when we do the work session, that's when the annual report, the annual work plan will be approved in August, so the OEs won't affect the evaluation that we're doing that's coming up in October, these would go into effect for his evaluation for next year.
Yeah, my, my comment was just going to be, I think that the technology piece of starting this school year is going to be critical, getting kids' devices right away and getting that rolling, because I have a tremendous amount of concern about how many kids are going to be quarantined. So I don't want to mess too much with technology right now, I think this is a good time to look at, at this OE and, and how we're going to monitor it going forward and not kind of demand a lot of the technology department until they kind of get this all settled in. Because I do, I think there's a lot that's going to be going on with technology in the next month or so, I'm just, and a lot of it too, is as a parent in the system who's dealing with this technology, I think that this OE is good and some of the stuff, I'm not exactly sure, Robin, what's, what's our, what's the monitoring and I know I've looked at this, what is our interpretation monitoring indicator for number four?
Can you say it?
Yeah, okay. I mean, that's, you know, that's a big bite, right? That's a huge bite right there and that's not something that I think we can get done before we do any kind of superintendent, because these are really kind of, like you said, Mr. Stravenger, they're, they're broad and policies. So, yeah, that was kind of my comment is I think that less stress on the technology department's functioning right now would probably be, be a good idea.
Well, I agree and I think Tanya has a good point, not, that's pretty much the way I was viewing it, just take that first bullet point and see, see what we can do with it. This is, as you pointed out, Ingrid, this is, there's a lot of stuff here and there's just no way we're going to get that done quick. So just bite, take a little bite of the elephant. And do that first bullet, what do you think, Dick? See how that goes? See how that goes?
Go ahead.
Okay, I can tell you're not happy, but I'm not sure where, where else to go.
Yeah, I'm just gonna make a point. This, this shouldn't be that hard. Uh, I know it had to be done before, but we should have this data on hand. If we don't, that, that's really a negative to me, but I understand that we probably, we can't do it before the superintendent gets evaluated this year. So we have to have a plan to tweak this thing more and more and more until we get where we want it. And then hopefully, we'll have it done in enough time for the staff to capture the data. But I'm disappointed that the kind of things we're asking about we should have, should be at the fingertips of our staff. I, I don't see bandwidth for student, I think I could come up with that very quickly. Devices per student ratio, I think I should be able to come up with that very quickly. I, but I, I'm, I'm gonna roll, I'm gonna roll, whatever you want to do, fine with me.
So, Mr. Schreiber, so this is what it looks like when an army colonel rolls. It's just not a natural state. Um, but I do think, you know, one of the things with like devices per student ratios, that's, we just authorized in the, since I've been on the board um K through second grade, so we just changed that recently, and we don't know what our enrollment looks like. And, you know, so that is something that it's gonna take, and one thing I think with this technology thing, we haven't done it before, which is both exciting and daunting, right? Because we don't have, we're not tweaking something that we've been doing all along. We've got this new program coming in, and I think that you and I and Mr. Schreiber all have more of a tech background, so we're looking at this going, wait, there's some pieces in here that need to be adjusted from when we did kind of the broad um take on this, but I think there's a tremendous amount of opportunity, but I think it's going to require a lot of doing, um, asking the staff to do things that have not yet, have not been done before. And not only is it new to the district, you think about the, uh, the change in educational technology that has taken place and is continuing to take place in the last eighteen months. I mean, the game has changed completely, so we're sort of trying to, you know, ride this wave um all the way, and so I think it's reasonable that this take a lot of time and that the staff says, you know, we can get this information, but they may not have it at the ready.
Uh, all right, how about, y'all pick one of these five, one of these five numbers to bring us to the next meeting. Is that possible? Tanya, Mark?
I yield to Mark on that.
What was the question, I'm sorry?
Which of the, um, which of the, let me make sure I'm clear on what you're asking, Mr. Schreiber, which of the OEs that we would have as readily available to bring for the committee?
Yeah, if there, yeah, if there's one that, that is a quick hitter, like Dick was indicating, um, let's do that for the next meeting. Because we all understand, this is crunch time, you have other things to do.
Number four.
Number four is the, whatever, whichever one, you know, y'all can talk it over and just bring one back at the next meeting, and we can focus on that.
Yes, and um, yeah, along with that, Mark has already prepared uh an organizational chart, uh updating his organizational chart and providing uh some, a brief background or job duties on some of the functions of the Network Operating Center, so I want to provide some kind of foundational information of the department as well, so I'd like to bring that, and then we could roll right into um OE seventeen point.
That sounds good with me. Because we had mentioned at the last meeting uh drawing a tour, which I, I can't do unless it's much later than this year, but um, that might lead us into that, so that sounds good to me. Dick, you're good with that approach? Okay, Ingrid, you're good with that for the next meeting?
Yep.
All right. All right, well, it's uh
Need to establish a date and time?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you all want this to be a as needed, or are we doing a set date and time?
Well, this is gonna be needed, a set date and time.
Okay.
We're, we're just starting, and this is gonna be a longer road than I think um many committees have. So I think a set date and time would be good.
So for next month, do you want to meet on the eighth?
That's good with me. Is it good with you, Dick? That's a Wednesday.
Yeah, I, I've got a commitment to all day on the eighth.
Okay.
September ninth, the Thursday.
I'm pretty flexible at the moment, just, you know, from my, my standpoint.
I am too, because I'm homebound, so I'm not. Only get out of the house to go to the doctor's.
It's probably good to stay in right now. Um, but yeah, so basically, I, I'm flexible.
Okay, so what did you say, Dick, the third?
Uh, the Sep- September ninth, Thursday, September ninth at eleven thirty is is good for me.
It's good with me.
Yep, I can put it on my calendar.
Uh, September ninth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That works, we don't bump into anybody.
I think it's finance committee.
So finance committee meets at five on that day. And you'll meet at eleven, eleven or eleven thirty? Do you all want eleven or eleven thirty?
I'm fine with either. I think they said eleven thirty.
Good with you, Mark? Good with Tanya?
Yes.
Ingrid, okay. All right, we're done.
Um, and Mr. Schreiber, one other thing that we maybe can put on the agenda too is, um, did you want to start looking at what's, well, we can talk about it later, you know, we had brought up one thing we had agreed on in the last meeting was possibly looking at um external people coming, you know, doing like an audit of our bandwidth and all that kind of stuff. Um, is that something we want to talk about more, or wait till we get more further along down the OEs?
Um, I would like to say we are already working on an RFP for a outside company to come in and do a full technology audit on equipment, um, the instructional side, pretty much the full gambit.
So we don't need to, we, that we don't need to worry about that then too much. Sounds like it's already in the works.
Yes.
Are they also, Mark, um, kind of wanted the, the five-year plan or the strategic plan for technology? Is that part of it?
Yes, yes.
They will actually help us write the, the technology plan update. Um, and help, we can, we can certainly bring an update to that work uh in the RFP process on the next meeting.
That'd be good, that would be good, because it sounds like you've already hit the target for us, for your, you're on your way. That, that'd be good. We'll put that on the next agenda.
Our RFP process, technology assessment, or RFP.
All right, anything else?
That should, that should get a lot done. You're looking good, Mr. Schreiber. You feeling all right?
Um, I have good days and bad days. Good days and bad days. It's one of those things where, you know, they give you something to take care of one thing, and it screws up something else. So then they give you something to take care of that, and that screws up something else.
The equilibrium with the human body is an impressive thing.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. And it's amazing how many pain points there are in a human body. I'm learning them too. I have learned them.
I just want to say, I, I thought you, you look good, look like you're doing well, so it's good to see.
Thanks. All right, I think we're, uh, we're done.
I move, we adjourn. Okay.
All right, thank you.